Okay, good evening, everyone. We're going to call our meetings to order. Welcome to our City Council meeting this evening. We're going to have a roll call by our city clerk Kathy Valdez.
The records shall reflect that all members are present.
We're going to have our Pledge of Allegiance, which is going to be led by council member Aguilera this morning. So you all rise, please.
Please join me in honoring our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's have a moment of silence in honor of those killed and hurt in the Sutherland Springs, Texas tragedy. Our thoughts and prayers are with their victims and their families, but if we could just have a moment of silence for them. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Buena Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. And next, we'll have approval of our agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes to the agenda this evening.
Okay, we have one presentation this evening. It will be our certificate of appreciation to our 2017 Star Spangled sponsors. So I'm going to have our whole council will come down with me, and we will give those out. City of Vista would like to acknowledge our generous Fourth of July Star Spangled sponsors for their contribution in making our 2017 Independence Day event such an outstanding success. Without their support, the Fourth of July celebration would not have been the best fireworks show in San Diego County. An estimated 10,000 people attended this year's display. On behalf of the City of Vista, thank you to each of you for being generous community partners. We applaud your commitment to our community. And at this time, we have a present, we're going to present a certificate of appreciation to each of our $5,000 sponsors. And the first one is Daytron World Communications. Is Diana Aaron here? Oh, yeah, there she is. Our next one is Dick Miller, Inc. Jeanne Lynn Grace is here. She is. Tri-City Medical Center, Jessica Schrader. Watkins Wellness, Stella Patterson and Chris Peavy. Dr. Bronner is here yet?
Right there.
Oh, there you are. Okay. So Dr. Bronner's, Trudy Bronner and Michael Millen. Do you want us back here? Yes. Okay. Okay. We appreciate them so much. Next is our consent calendar, items C1 through C8. The recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the clerk's secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar. We have eight consent items this evening, C1 through C8. And do we have anything pulled by the public? No. Okay, nothing pulled by the public. Any of you want to pull anything? If not, I would entertain a motion. Can I have a motion?
I'll second it.
A second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. So moving on, we're going to go to the public hearings. There are three public hearings this evening. The first one, public hearing number one, is a public hearing to receive testimony regarding sewer service rates for fiscal years 2018, 19 through 2022, 23. So the public hearing is now open. Principal Engineer Elmer Alex will present the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'm Elmer Alex, the principal engineer in sewer engineering, and with me is Mr. Sanjay Gaur from Raftless Financial Consultants. This item that I'm presenting to you is the public hearing for the proposed sewer service rates for fiscal year 1819 to 2022, 2023. A recap on some of the prior actions. In September 12, 2017, the City Council and the Buena Sanitation District Board of Directors approved the sewer rate study prepared by Raftless Financial Consultants and instructed staff to notify our Vista and Buena properties with sewer services. Staff mailed out more than 45 days in advance a notice to 16,900 Vista properties and 6,400 Buena properties. The mailed notices included information on a Spanish translation of the notice available on the city website, and the notice was also in the Union Tribune city website, city clerk page, and the city news page. The city runs both the City of Vista Sewer System and the Buena Sanitation District Sewer System. The Vista system was created in 1920 and owns about 215 miles of pipe and three pump stations. Two of the pump stations are shared with the City of Carlsbad. The City of Vista owns about $100 million in sewer assets. And the Buena Sanitation District started in 1960 and owns about 100 miles of pipeline and one pump station, and owns about $40 million in pipeline assets. Both the Vista and Buena Sanitation District are both members of Encina Wastewater Authority, and Encina charges both the City and Buena for operation maintenance of the treatment plant and along with capital improvements at the treatment plant. And both City and Buena contract operate the pump stations to Encina. Sewer service provides a very important function for our city. It transports the wastewater and actually treats and removes viruses, bacterias, solids, and organics, and then ultimately discharges that treated wastewater into the Pacific Ocean. Vista residents and Buena Sanitation District residents have enjoyed a healthier community by taking the sewage away from their properties, and it also provides businesses with much-needed So the next couple of slides provide the mayor and the council with information on the performance of our utility compared to our neighboring agencies. As you can see, both the Vista and Buena Sanitation District are performing very well compared to our neighboring agencies in total number of public sewer spills occurring since January We're also performing very well in total volume of public sewer spills here. As you can see, both Vista and Buena are performing much better than our neighboring agencies shown on the graph here. The number and volume of spills can lead to enforcement actions from the state, which can find utilities in cities anywhere between $2 to $10 per gallon of sewer spills. Sewer service rates are fees, and their revenues are solely dedicated to providing sewer services, O&amp;M, and capital projects. The rates are based on the benefits to the user and are approved by the City Council through Citizen Initiative Proposition 218. The cost of service study that was approved on September 12 was prepared by Raftless Financial Consultants. They are a specialized financial consultant experienced in Proposition 218 studies and with the goal of distributing costs evenly across all customers based on flow and strength of sewage. Our team has reviewed VID water meter data, sorry, and reviewed the sewage meter data that we have at various locations within the system. I'll hand it over to Mr. Gaur to talk about details of the financial plan.
Thank you, Elmer. So when conducting a financial plan, we take into account three aspects. We take into account the revenues that are generated under the current rates. We take into account other sources of revenues that the city or the district may occur. We look at the financial policies. We review that. We ask ourselves what's appropriate reserve levels. We look at coverage ratio. That's when you, debt issuance, there's a covenants that's required. We need to make sure we meet that in the financial plan. Then we look at expense. We look at the O&amp;M expense. We project that out. We work with staff in determining what's the appropriate amount of increases that we anticipate based on historical information. We look at the capital improvement plan. We ask ourselves, how much are we going to be able to spend on an annual basis? What's appropriate amount? Do we need to issue debt or not? Based on all that information, we develop a multi-year financial plan. The model that we have developed is been given to the city, and the city has a copy of it. Next, we ask ourselves, what's the appropriate flow and strength for our customers? So we actually have a lot of data. We actually know what goes into the treatment plant from the different customer classes, and we know how many customers you have. So we know, we have a couple of information. We know what goes into the treatment plant. We know the flows associated with commercial, so we know what then must be the flows associated with residential. We can also do the same kind of analysis on the strength. Once we do that, we ask ourselves, what's the appropriate customer class associated? We identify three customer classes, actually four. One's residential, another three are associated with commercial, which is low, medium, and high strength. We categorize those customers based on what's reasonable and the strength associated with them. Low strength, as you can see, are offices, schools, retail, churches. Medium strength are a little bit higher, and then high strength are typically restaurants, breweries, and grocery stores where there's a lot of organic waste being disposed. Next, we go through the operating budget and the capital budget, and we ask ourselves, what's the flow and strength associated with those budget components? And how much does it cost to actually treat the flow and strength? We actually develop unit rates associated with that. Based on that unit rate, then we can actually start developing the actual associated rates for each of your customers. So we know the flow. We know the strengths. We know the total suspended solids, and we know how much those unit costs are. We use that information and develop the appropriate rates.
Thank you, Sanjay. The following table here, or graph, shows the, what we call the biochemical oxygen demand, which is the strength of wastewater being sent to Encina. The following graph shows a trend of approximately 30% increase in strength of wastewater being sent to Encina as far as biological chemical oxygen demand. It's important to note that Encina uses a three-year trailing average on BOD to determine how each member agency is billed for their wastewater. Okay. So based on those increased costs, they were, we, the, we're looking at the, oh, you got? Okay, sorry. We have the total suspended solid trend. This also shows a 30% increase in the solids that's being sent there. And again, the same averages using there for Vista and Buena that Encina uses a three-year trailing average for our costs. So based on the cost of service study prepared by Raftless, staff recommends the following sewer service fees. These are shown as annual fees. For Vista residential, we are proposing no rate increases for the next two fiscal years, followed by a 1%, 2%, and 2% increase. Single-family rates include single-family homes, duplexes, and condominiums, while multifamily rates include apartments and mobile homes. For Buena residential rates, we both have city and county rates. The rate study is recommending a 6.8% one-time reduction in residential for city and also a 1.78 one-time reduction for residential county rates. The difference between the city and county rates are for water quality protection staff, which the city provides for Buena customers who reside in the city limits. In the county of San Diego, they provide the service for the Buena customers who aren't in the city, with no annual increases through fiscal year 2022 to 2023, for the length of this study. For Vista commercial and industrial rates, the cost of service study is recommending increases to these rates. It's important to note that the commercial rate includes both a fixed component and a flow component. The fixed charge is a portion of bill based on how much capacity a property owns, and this is measured in units of EDUs or equivalent dwelling units, a flow similar to an average single-family home. The flow charge is based on the strength and amount of sewage generated. The cost of service study recommends a 2% annual increase for the next five years in the commercial industrial rates in the City of Vista. It's important to note that in the high strength, that the original rates, that the cost of service study in 2007 only allocated for a concentration of 500 milligrams of BOD, and the current study recommends increasing that allocation to 1,000. As you can see in the previous graphs, how strong our wastewater's been getting over at Encino. For our proposed city commercial industrial rates, staff is recommending increases to those rates. The major change is that staff is recommending allocating the water quality protection program to the fixed portion of the sewer rates, as that program is primarily correlated to the amount of sewage and not the strength of sewage generated. In previous rates, the water quality protection services were allocated across both fixed and strength portions. Staff is recommending no annual increases through 2022, 23 after this initial adjustment. For our Buena County commercial industrial customers, staff in the study is recommending that they have no increases to the fixed portion of the bill, but increases to the strength portion to match that cost structure, cost strength portion of the rates with the Buena city customers. The next component of a commercial and industrial bill are the excess users. These are commercial and industrial properties that generate more wastewater than the owned and capacity ownership. In Vista, we're proposing an increase from $464 to $506 per excess EDU used. In Buena, we're recommending two separate different rates, 485 for Buena City and 443 for Buena County per EDU. Because of the various changes into the commercial industrial rates, the following slides kind of show the, how this will affect average commercial and industrial customers. So this first slide shows what the potential effect is to Vista commercial industrial, both across, across all low, medium, and high strength, with a low strength, medium strength seeing about a 10% increase, and a high strength about an 18% increase. For Buena city commercial customers, this graph shows what the average user for each class there is going to see. This will be between 11 and 22%. Again, the allocation of the high strength is counting for additional BOD and TSS that we're allocating for in the cost. And our, the following graph shows the changes that Buena County commercial customers may see, about 10 to 13% increase across all strings. To recap, the rates for the City of Vista residential rates, staff is recommending a 0% increase, 0% changes for the next two years, followed by a 1%, 2%, and 2%. For commercial industrial, a one-time variable adjustment across all rates, followed by 2% annual increases. For our Buena customers, a one-time 6.8 reduction for city customers and a 1.8% reduction in county customers, followed by no annual increases. For our commercial industrial in Buena, the variable adjustments followed by no annual With the rate study, staff is also recommending some updates to the Vista municipal code. We are recommending that the lower, that we lower the treatment and discharge rate stabilization reserve from 25% to 15%. And also nomenclature changes from, from excess usage to capacity rental that will better reflect what the commercial industrial customers are, who are using more capacity than they own, how they are using the system. And also based on an internal staff study of wastewater use for hotels and motels, establish a 0.4 EDU capacity per room for new hotels and motels. For Buena, staff is recommending increasing the emergency capital reserve account from 700,000 to 1 million to account for the additional construction costs, increases in construction costs that are happening. To kind of summarize, the letters received so far, Vista has received nine protests from residential customers. Buena has received one protest and two support letters from residential. One of the support letters actually thanked us for providing a Spanish translation of the notice. And those that have, have mentioned about the affordability, we provided them information on our lifeline rebate program for low-income residents within the city limits. Staff is available with any questions you may have on this matter.
Okay, I have three speakers. Would you like to hear the speakers first? Okay, we'll start with Ray McDorsky. Up here, come with the microphone, right here.
Elmer. Can you turn the microphone on? Thank you. Hi, my name is Ray McDorsky. I'm resident of County Vista, and I'm very disappointed of you terrorizing us or people. Your rates, what you impose on us old people are unfair, cruel, cruel. I have a pension, 800 a month, 11,000 a year, little bit less than you. You have probably a little bit more, but I have to for my water, really. I'm using one unit per month, about 11, 12 unit per year, and I'm paying less than $100. But so for sewer, I have to pay over $600, and you don't care. I'm 87 years old, and you are telling me to write your letter, opposition, when my hands are shaky and my head is stupid. I was smart when I was young. I was electrical contractor. I was teacher in Poland. But now I'm 87 years old, and you are asking me to write you poems? If you are really decent person, send me ballot if I'm yes or again. Even now, I have to come over here, but going home, this is dark, and you don't care if I could afford to go home when it's dark. Why don't you do that during the daytime? So more old people are come over here and express their, what they are thinking. You are abusing 600 over, and you are telling me to pay for my sewer when I'm using less than $100 for my water. Why? Because I have to support the people who has the plenty, children, rich, and big houses. But you are going by volume, not what is fair. I'm paying for my electricity rate by my timer. I pay for water, how much I're using, and before I was paying how much I're using the water. But you now, you don't care. I have to pay for rich people, multifamily people, and I'm single. I'm in Vista 42 years. What you want me now? Sell my house and go where? And I'm over here 42 years. That's, you are fair. You never think about that. You just think of your volume, you're smart. I was smart too when I was over here. I come to 52 years ago. I was fighting for justice, democracy, but you don't have the justice. That's all. You are not taking care for our people, you see?
Mr. McDorsky? Over here. Your time is up, but we do care, but if you, you check with one of our staff, there is a, for low-income residents, there is a rebate that you can get, so there, that will help you.
Why I'm not getting?
Well, you have to, if you check with somebody from our staff afterwards, we'll just talk to you and have somebody talk to you.
Don't you know me, where I live? I'm over here 42 years. Don't you know how much water I're using? You have the record. That you have computer?
Yes, sir.
In 10 minutes, you know everything.
Okay, thank you, sir. Phil Tessier.
Good evening, Philip Teshar. We have a number of commercial properties in the area. On one of them, we have a tenant who's a bakery, and they have, they employ many people in the hundreds, I'm sure. This last year, they paid $25,000 in water bills to supply the water, and the first bill that came out was $70,000 in sewer bills. And I appealed it, and it went down to $60,000. But just as a, as a high-level looking at, it's ridiculous that if you're using $25,000 with the water, why does it cost over two times the amount to get rid of the water? It shouldn't be that much. And then the calculate, I have, I have a letter which we had, which I had submitted, which you all have. It goes into more detail, but one of the, one of the things in the calculations is that they talk about equivalent dwelling, EDUs, equivalent dwelling units, and the way they calculate it doesn't take into effect, doesn't take into account that, well, there's a penalty with the EDUs if you go over your base EDUs, but then the way they calculate it, if you go over one EDU, you get charged the equivalent of 6.7 EDUs, and that's the example I gave in my appeal letter. And then also, there's, the city ordinance has a multiplier that they use, and I think that was done a number of years ago, of 1.3. So in addition to being penalized for going over EDUs, you get an additional charge of 1.3 on top of the other charges. So it's compounding the penalties. And then with the, with the presentation tonight, I'm upset that the price for commercials going way up, you know, to 15% or so, but then the residential part is going down. And it seems to me that the commercial properties are subsidizing the residential properties, which is not allowed per Prop 218. It has to be rateably adjusted for everybody based on usage and so on. And then there's other factors that are in the report, such as a 7% increase for the employment and staff part, but then everything else is about 3% for the most part. So I don't know why that is going up to be, you know, 7% for one thing, and everything else is a lot, you know, is a lot less. You know, we all want the City of Vista to be the best place to be. We have a number of properties up here. I'm a big supporter of Vista. I, when I, when we have tenants, we tell them, this is a great place to have business. But it's hard for me to do that if the sewer bills are so much more expensive than other places in the county. So I'd really like you guys to not approve it tonight and really look at how we can get the prices down for the, for the get the prices down for the, for the treatment of the, of the sewers, so that people can come here and have successful businesses. We've lost two business, two big businesses already. I'm afraid we might lose a couple more. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll try and give you some answers on your, on your, on your letter.
Thank you.
Councilman Franklin, Deputy Mayor Franklin, did you want to say something right now? Or do, I have one more speaker. Okay. Carol M. Muse.
Good evening. I'm really shocked there's not more people speaking in behalf of homeowners. I've been a homeowner in Vista for over 20 years, and I am a college graduate. I'm a teacher, but I substitute teach, so my income is very low. It is very difficult, in spite of all the other bills, the cost of living, just all the other bills associated with your home, your property taxes, your car payment, your food, et cetera, to make a survive. And yes, there is a rebate, which I appreciate, although you still have to come up with 6, $700 at one time to pay for this bill. Otherwise, it is included onto your property taxes, which are already pretty high. To come up with $1,000, $1,100, $1,500, $1,700, whatever they may be, obviously, mine are relatively low because I've been there a while, it's still a huge burden. I appreciate that you are providing a healthy environment. I appreciate that we have not had sewer spills. I appreciate that you have a savvy financial plan. Although I think you need to take into consideration that there has been an increase in properties purchases, and that should offset some of these expenses, because there is a increase in population. And Vista would automatically allow for an increase of revenues for sewer improvements based on increase of housing, apartment dwellings, and users, offsets by just the population increase alone. I am opposed to this increase. I'm asking that you would be considerate of the homeowners, the average middle-class, which is a majority of Vista, and not penalize us for the expense of the increase in personal, personal agendas, and possibly larger homes and apartments that are, you know, that are taking place. So by the way, this is not, when you're saying you're proposing an increase of 1 to 2 percent, this has been a steady increase over the years. It's not like we haven't had an increase, and all of a sudden you're proposing an increase. There's been an increase, a steady increase in my bill every year of approximately 40 to 50 dollars, 60 dollars. And I think it was five years ago, there was another proposal for a large increase, which it just seems like a continual increase, and I don't see that we, it is necessary, I'm sorry. So I'm opposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Franklin.
The first thing I wanted to ask was, could you explain the reduction in the rate stabilization fund? The methodology behind that and the...
Yes, the rate stabilization fund was a reserve initially accounted for Encina treatment costs, and that was 25 percent of Encina's treatment costs over the last five years. This was to try to account for increases that Encina might have. But through the last 10 years, Encina and staff have been working to stabilize those rates, and Encina has no longer charged the city and Buena services above what they had proposed budgeted. So they had stabilized their, their costs, and they're meeting their budgets. So they're no longer charging more than what they are budgeting for. In addition, the Vista sewer funds, both funds have a 50 percent operating reserve for the entire sewer functions. So in that is already 50 percent of Encina's costs. So staff feels that, recommends that, that's almost a 75 percent reserve instead of a more reasonable 65 percent reserve.
So, does Encina do a Prop 218? No? Have we...
They don't, they don't set the rates. They bill us their services.
Prop 218 only applies to retail. So your residential, commercial, Encina provides water services to agencies or cities. So they don't fall under Prop 218, they don't have to do a notice requirement.
I understand, but have they done a study to understand what their costs are going to be, what cost increases might come in the next few years?
They're, they're constantly budgeting every year with a 10-year financial plan, and also doing multiple studies on tracking flows and sols that are coming at. So they're constantly looking at, at these types of costs.
But you're not sure if they've done a five-year, 10-year projection of, of costs?
They have done a 10-year projection of their costs, and that's been put into this rate study.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. The next question I have, I read Mr. Tessier's letter, and I, the argument that he makes about the bakery actually consuming most of the water and not flushing it, and that their viscosity of their waste is, is lower than, they're in the high. If they want to, if they want to have an individual determination, or if any business wants an individual determination based on the strength of their flow, is that something that we offer to businesses?
That is something we could offer to sample their wastewater.
So right now, we just say, you're in this category, and if they say, well, this doesn't really accurately apply to my business, we just say, too bad?
Well, there, there's an appeal process that's allowable for them to go through, and then as, as Mr. Alex said, they can have their strength tested if they'd like.
So we do allow that?
They would have to provide the data using the approved formats by Encina wastewater at their own cost, to provide that data for us. And that was included in the appeal letter response to Mr. Tessier.
What kind of cost is associated with doing one of those studies?
It would just be sampling cost, not...
A few thousand dollars?
To do EPA approval, no more than a couple thousand, I would say.
Okay. So it might be well advisable for a business that thinks that their flow is weaker than they're being assessed for? And could you explain the 6.7 EDUs that are billed for the one increment over that Mr. Tessier was referring to?
So the code, the code updates that we recommend in the staff report here has to eliminate that 1.3 multiplier that is causing that excess calculation. So in sections 6.04 of Buena and 14.0604 of Vista, we're recommending deleting those sections in that multiplier.
So, give me that back in third-grade speak.
That 1.3 multiplier, that's cascading problem, is being eliminated with the code update.
So we're no longer going to have the 6.7? Mr. Alex, maybe you can give an example of what, with the code change, what that'll mean if you go over in your capacity?
So, right now, so if you have owned 10 EDUs and you went over by 20, so, or another 10, let's say 10, let's keep a multiple of 10. So that would be 20 EDUs. So you would take that difference, you'd take 20 and then multiply it by 1.3, would, that would be now...
So you pay 30 percent premium? Did you say 20, or the excess was 10, right? They own 10, they're using an X, they're using 20, so there's an excess of 10. So they pay 1.3 times the EDU rate for the excess use, yes?
So that was the past.
That's the past.
We're not doing that anymore.
So there was a 30 percent premium...
That's gone.
...on rented EDUs?
Yes, that's gone.
And what's the premium going to be in the new plan?
The premium now is just going to be the cost of actually renting it.
So there will be no premium?
No premium.
Okay. Okay. So effectively, does that diminish the incentive for a business owner, and I don't know if it matters, but to buy their EDUs?
It could. I mean, that's one of the challenges we struggled with.
Hmm? Not necessarily an issue in, in our revenue structure?
It's not an issue with your necessarily revenue structure, but it does, it could create a situation. I mean, we, we developed that equitable fee associated with renting it. You can purchase it, the capacity, or you can rent it. And if you own property and you rent it out, you know, some breweries, for instance, or bakeries, or whatever, they may want to not hurt, they want rent property and not buy the capacity, because they might not be in business for that long. So it does help with businesses who are unknown if they're going to be around for a long period.
But help me understand this. When I buy my capacity EDUs, I'm investing in the sewer infrastructure? I'm essentially in buying up capacity, not, so if the EDU charge only represents the ongoing and not the fixed capital investment, then...
It represents the renting of the fixed capital investment.
Right.
So it's still...
It's at the same rate. Because, I mean, it would seem like the premium, if I'm understanding it correctly, it seems like the premium was for a reason. What was the logic behind the premium when we imposed the premium?
We cannot find that in the staff report from 2007 when that was created.
I think the logic is that if you have 10 EDUs and you're using 20, we really want you to buy 20 EDUs. So you have a total capacity of 20. So there's the multiplier there to kind of force your hand to own what you use in the system.
Right.
I think that was the logic from the past.
After the business park got built out, what kind of, what kind of sale average did we have of EDUs? I mean, were we doing quite a bit of transaction? In other words, what I'm saying is, are we going to have a lot of falloff of revenue because we're no longer selling EDUs? I mean, if I can rent them for the same price as buy them, why would I ever pony up the, what's the cost to own an EDU?
In Buena, the capacity charge is about $5,600 per EDU.
Right. And if, so why would I pay that upfront? Why would I make that upfront capital expenditure if I can rent it?
Well, initially, when you first connect, you do have to purchase. So what happens is when tenants move in and out, charges could vary and capacity use could vary.
But if they use, if they buy 10 and they use 20, then they're never paying that additional. So we're losing revenue on that transaction under the new plan, which then it seems like we've raised prices for other businesses. What am I missing there?
Typically, typically what happens is when a business comes in or develops, they fall into a criteria, let's say it's a retail center, and you need a certain number of EDUs, which is probably a low number. And then all of a sudden, it becomes a dry cleaner, which is a much higher number of EDUs that are needed. That's what happens. So you might own 10, but you might need 20 in the future. The property owner doesn't want to pay for it because that dry cleaner may not be in business for the next six years, and that property owner doesn't want to own 20 EDUs for the life of the building and make that investment.
And once you buy an EDU, you can't sell it to anybody else?
No, it's yours.
You can't? Okay.
It's not, it's not tradable. It must stay on the property.
So as Mr. Alex said, it might be easier for that property owner just to rent it, lease it, so to speak, so they don't make that large capital investment of 10 more EDUs, which is $50,000.
So it sounds like, are we projecting our revenue for the sale of new EDUs to go to zero?
No, we're not.
What would, what would a business owner's incentive be if it's the same cost? Why would they do an upfront capital expenditure if there's not a discount for doing that?
You have to purchase EDUs. So that's based on engineer estimates.
But I thought they could just go over. Oh, okay, based on, but, but so if the use changes...
That's the challenge.
So, okay, so you have a number that you sell when a new business goes in. However, when the use chan, or when a new, when a new permit...
New tenant.
...is granted for, not even a new tenant, right? Because we're saying that the tenant might change, and that would change the EDUs, and we're not going to make them buy up new EDUs for that, we're going to allow them to rent.
We'd offer to allow them to buy, but they also have the option to lease those EDUs or rent those EDUs.
We typically recommend, especially when breweries move into commercial properties, that we advise the property owner that there may be extra, much higher levels of use and strength coming in, and that you may want to consider purchasing sewer capacity at the time that they pull the building permit.
But it's not cheaper to buy them in advance now, under the new rate structure?
In the long term, it's cheaper.
Oh, in the long term, it is?
Yes. The issue is the short term.
Okay.
If you're a business, am I going to be around for more than three years or not?
The other question I wanted to ask was, how do we compare to other cities with business parks in terms of our sewer rates? And is there an issue we can, should be concerned with in terms of competitive competitiveness with other cities?
City clerk, can we get to 34? Slide 34. You can see here with the proposed rates with Vista and Buena, with the cost of service, you're looking at, Escondido is offer, is having a 5.5 percent increase every year for the next five years. That's a total of 27.5. In their fourth year of their rate, they'll most likely pass our rates. I've also compared some other districts that aren't as nearby but are similar in size. One would be the Fall Brick Public Utilities. That's similar to Buena as far as customers and size and capacity. For the next four, next five years, they're proposing a 4.5 percent every year for the next five years. So that's, they're doing a 22.5 percent. And the City of Poway is also doing a cost of service study, and they're similar to Vista in size, about 200 miles with the same amount of pump stations, and their proposed increase is 5 percent. And when you look at their numbers, I don't have it plotted, but their, their numbers would exceed what, on a per gallon basis, what ours is.
So because the EDU is the basic unit for commercial as well, these comparisons would be...
Would be comparable, yes.
Okay. But you're saying we're on a trajectory to, to meet or get closer with their projected growth in their fees?
They are. They are projecting.
Well, I, my final comment is, I do think that the city and the staff's done a great job in terms of not putting us in a position to have to approve a 20 percent increase, although, you know, and, and I also appreciate the work that the city's done to try and assign cost accurately. I know that there's more that we can do, and there's a lot of residents that are asking for costs to be more accurately assigned, and we've been talking with staff about that and that possibility. But I do just want to say thank you that we're not looking at a massive shortfall and trying to come from behind, and really facing a lot of very unhappy residents, so thank you for that.
Councilman Green.
Hello, Elmer. All right, I got a few questions for you. First question is, when was our last sewer increase, and how much was it?
In Vista, the last rate approval was in 2013 for five years. It was first two years of 0 percent, followed by a 1.6, and a 1.9, and 2.2 percent increases in years three, four, and five. In that same cycle for Buena, Buena had no increases for five, for that five years.
Okay, so it looks like every five years, we're increasing about 5 percent roughly, so that we can avoid that big 20 percent hit. Does that sound right?
We're trying to implement a program to stay ahead of our repairs and needs.
Okay, cool. The other thing is, I was looking at the, where we're at right now, the average household bill is $674. A 5 percent increase would be $33.70 over five years. We have no increase the first two years, so year three, your bill goes up $6.74. Year four, it goes up $13.48. And year five, it goes up $13.48. So bottom line is, if you were to break it down monthly, after... So bottom line is, if you were to break it down monthly, after five years, your payment on your sewer is going to go up $2.81 per month. Does that sound correct? I'm sure it does. I'm good with numbers. My concern was, the resident who spoke before said that there was an increase to her bill of $40 one year and $50 the next year, which, I mean, you know, those are both pretty high increases year by year. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have, you know, consecutive years where we were increasing that. The other, last note that I just wrote here is, the reason why we're increasing the costs on the commercial is because since 2009, which is over the last eight years, the strength of their BOD has increased by 30% and it costs us more to treat that water.
It costs us more to treat that water and also the capital improvements necessary that have to treat that portion.
Okay. And I think those were all of my, oh, last question, wrote this down. The gentleman who was here before said he made $11,000 per year. Would he qualify for that lifeline program rebate at that income level?
If he is a city resident...
Which he is. Oh, he's county.
He's a county resident, correct.
So they don't have an increase then?
Because the rebate is paid out of the city's general fund.
Okay.
And because of Prop 218, every customer has to pay the same rate.
Okay, thank you.
And maybe...
If you want to speak, you want to fill out a slip and then you can come up and speak?
And maybe Mr. Alex can discuss the fact that commercial, or I should say, commercial's not subsidizing single-family residential. Because that was one of the questions too, maybe clarify that.
Oh, sorry. So what we do is, we do a cost of service analysis where we look at the flows that goes into the treatment plant, as I mentioned. We also look at the costs associated with the strength and flow. So we actually get unit rates. We know how much it actually costs for a single BOD, for a single unit of TSS, and how much for flow. And then we assign that cost based on the actual flow and strength of each of the customers. So based on that realignment that has occurred, that's why we see these changes. So things have changed significantly since you last did the rate study, if you think about it. We had the drought, residential customers have reduced their water use significantly. We've also seen a lot more strength in the community with different industries coming in, which is great for business and stuff, but that's also put an extra cost on the city.
So my understanding, though, you mentioned residential conservation efforts with water. Conservation of water actually increases strength, right?
Correct.
So, but we're not increasing, I mean, I guess we don't need to...
Well, we do look at the strength associated with residential customers and they have increased. But relative to the commercial, commercial's increased even more. So you are correct. And then in the report that we put together, you can see that the actual strength associated with residential is higher than it has been. So in the past, it used to be 180 BODs, now it's like 2, 300 we're looking at, associated.
So the question of subsidizing by commercial is...
You can't do that under Prop 218. That's, you know, so that's why you hire an independent consultant to do the study so that it, and we have a document that's on your website that clearly shows the math and the logic. So I really suggest a gentleman to read, look at the report and he can see how we derive these rates and the logic behind it.
And then there was something that was mentioned, and I've heard this from several residents. You know, we've had an increase in homeownership recently, in the last few years. How does that fit into the equation? I mean, would that offset or would that increase or keep it the same? I mean, or, I mean, just, or just not affected at all or be an independent effect, I guess, to our rates?
So it affects it two ways. So there's some, you have what we call fixed costs. So that helps, advertises that cost over, so more people, that's good. But you also have a flow component and that's the Encina cost. That's actually based on flow that goes into the treatment plant. So as your flow and strength increases, your costs associated with Encina goes up.
Okay.
So, so you have both combinations occurring.
Okay, so really adding homeowners doesn't really reduce our costs.
It, no, it doesn't.
It does reduce it on the fixed side.
Correct.
But not necessarily on the flow, on the flow side.
Correct. And the flow is a one-to-one. So one way to think about it is, is as people increase, you, you won't have a one-to-one increase in cost. It'll be less than that.
Something less, but it's probably very...
Yeah, but it's not going to be zero.
Right. It's pretty much, yeah. If you round it, it's going to be zero. Which gets me to my next question, which is interesting that, I'm glad you went over. Somebody, I think Mr. Green asked about the last increase. And every time we do an increase or, you know, over time, it's 00122 or some combination similar to that. What is the logic in that? I mean, wouldn't it make sense just, I mean, if we know what our, our costs are going to be, wouldn't it just make sense to pick a fixed percentage over the five years and spread it out?
I mean, that's a, I mean, that's a policy decision. I mean, you know, this is based on what direction we receive. You can do, you can do, you know, you have options. Now, you went through the Prop 218 notice, so by doing that, you've sort of set the rates, that the maximum, you know, that the city council can adopt. So we couldn't adopt higher rates the first two years.
We couldn't?
No, because of this, because you already noticed them in the Prop 218 notice.
But prior to the noticing, if we wanted to propose raising, increasing the rates 1% per year to get to that same amount, you could do it a number of different ways.
Because, I mean, if you do this over, I mean, we're only talking about five years, but if you do this over 10 or 15 or 20 years, which I'm assuming that's, I haven't been on council that long, I'm assuming that's been the path. The sooner you raise rates, the quicker you get to the end result. But in the end, it saves the taxpayers money too.
Correct.
Rather than raising at the end. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. So I think that's great input. So I think the next time staff does the study, we, you know, take that into account and just do...
It could be something less than 1% potentially if we do it evenly over every year. So I would suggest that we do that or at least look into that. So that's the only questions I have. Thank you, staff, for all your work. And I know you spent a lot of time with us over the last several months, hammering you guys on how you come up with these numbers. And it is difficult to understand. And I've sat on Encina wastewater board in the past. So I'm very familiar with, you know, how they do their business. And it's a tough business and it's changing. And I know that not just here in Vista, but in all cities, all in North County, San Diego, I think this is an issue throughout. So I appreciate your work. Thank you.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for being here and for such a comprehensive report. This is never an easy conversation to have, but it is a very important one to have. So I appreciate everybody who came out tonight also to speak with us about this. I, I want to go back and ask a question about, it was brought up a minute ago and perhaps I misunderstood the answer, about county customers. Because Buena sanitation also serves people who live in the county, correct?
Correct.
And so we have this gentleman here who is a senior on a fixed income. And we offer rebates, but not to our customers, but only customers that live within the city boundaries. That's a bit off for me because he's a customer of ours. And if we are offering rebates for particular situations and he would qualify, why do we not offer rebates to all of our customers, just selected ones? I mean, he's paying, he's a paying customer. I don't...
The rebates are not, as stated, the rebates are not funded through the sewer service program. They're funded by the city's general, general fund.
Okay, so I understand that.
It's a decision that the city has made for its customers as opposed to, it's not forced to do that.
Is there a way that we could create something for these other customers within, within our realm, our, our boundaries or our jurisdiction as Buena sanitation, not Vista sanitation?
I'm not sure on the legality, but it is general fund money.
Is that something that we can investigate? Because if we're going to offer rebates for people through, through Vista, through Vista sanitation because of financial circumstances or disability or seniors, it just seems to me that there's got to be some way that we could also help our customers of Buena sanitation. So maybe that's something that we can have come back to us and discuss it?
What we can do is, we can explore it with the county to see if they would like, as we do with our general fund monies to our ratepayers who are residents, if they would like to extend that same offer to the residents of the county.
Whatever avenues we have open to us to investigate that, I would appreciate that very much.
Certainly.
Whatever avenue and get that bulldozer out and make a new avenue. I'm all for that. The other question I had for you is, I wanted to back it up a little bit because we did see quite a difference in some of the cities and what they're charging versus what we're charging. But there was also quite a difference in some of the other issues that those other cities are having. And I wanted to ask, we have been very good about keeping up our maintenance and our repairs and our infrastructure and going through systematically to replace. And a lot of the, a lot of the repairs in the roads dug up and the new pipes that you've seen, that's us doing that job. Because we do not want to ever get into a situation knowingly that we have a spill like some of our neighboring city, cities or San Diego has had with the dilapidated and unmaintained lines that have caused large spills. Can you give an example of some of the costs associated with those spills? Especially not just in the cleanup and the repair of it after the damage is done, but as far as fines go? My understanding is that some of these fines can be pretty incredible.
So the regional board can actually fine utilities between $10, $2 to $10 per gallon per incident based on repetitive actions. So we know some of our neighbor agencies are in the process of negotiating those with the regional board, but they have authority to charge us. So if you see some of the spills there being half a million gallons, that would equate to a $5 million fine.
In addition to the costs of the repairs and everything?
In this case of response, the environmental cleanup that the regional board would require.
Right. So it can be, it can be pretty, pretty expensive for a city to not maintain their infrastructure, which is what we're trying to stay ahead of. And I appreciate that very, very much. But all of my other questions were asked and answered, so thank you very much.
Okay. And I'll just kind of, just to remind people that everybody, we had the low-flow toilets and we all saved water and everything, but that increased, it's kind of gross, but it increased the flow a lot that goes over to Encina. So, you know, and so that, so when you say, you know, the waters, your water bill is lower, but your sewer bill is higher, that's the reason, is because the strength of what we're pushing over there is, is really gross. Anyway, okay, so Councilwoman Franklin, Deputy Mayor Franklin.
I just wanted to real quickly agree with Councilman Aguilera about spreading out our next rate increase if we can't do it for this one, Mr. City Manager. I, I think that's a really important, that we don't create those kind of jumps and spikes that level approach to increasing fees. I really like so. Couple of years from now, what are, are we going through 2022 here? So if I'm still around in 20, whatever, I'd just like to make a note of that since we have to note it well in advance of the, of the noticing, that I would be a proponent of that as well. And I probably shouldn't chime in, but I was just thinking on that, on the lifeline thing, it's essentially, it's effectively a welfare payment to our residents, right? That's paid for out of the general fund. And, and I could see the reason it's only available to our residents being that because they pay property taxes and other taxes in the city and therefore finance it and so they're receiving a benefit back. I can understand that, so that's all I've got.
Councilman Aguilera.
I just wanted to agree with that last statement that Deputy Mayor Franklin made. I would be opposed to financing anything outside of the city.
I have two more speakers that came in late, so you want to hear the speakers? Okay, Aleah Helms.
I'm the ugly stepdaughter because I live in the county. I moved here in 1972 and my sewer bill was $132. It maintained that until the city of Vista took over the sewage. Now I'm paying $640 a year. So that's my increase. Besides that, I live on York Drive. And the city of Vista came and made new sewer lines or whatever. They bought up property all the way from one end of York to the other end of York. They paid each homeowner thousands of dollars. My son lived on York Drive and was on this side and he received about $8,000. They put it in and I was not a recipient of that and nor did I want it. But they raised the property on the, the person on this side that has their water flowing down from Montevista flows into my property now because they raised the road and then they put rock on the road. The rock is in my yard. I have, I had water streaming through my property. It pushed the rocks that I had put to maintain my dog in my yard, my mastiff in my yard. And it pushed it and the next thing I know, my dog's out in the front. Nothing good has happened from the city taking over. I've called and I've called and I've called and I've called. And the one person that I did speak to said, you are in... I said, listen, nobody's returning my calls. I'm not getting any feedback. I've got a mess here on my property and now I'm a widow and I can't maintain it. And he goes, well, you know what? There's a problem. And I said, the fact that I'm in the county? And he said, exactly. So I can't vote for you or against you, so I'm SOL. And I'm irritated at the price and then the mess that I have.
Thank you. Jeff Sims.
Good evening, counsel. I'm sorry, I got here late and I didn't get to hear all of the discussion before. But I'm a business owner in, in Vista. And I opened a business in 1988 with my wife and we were able to buy a building about 1998. And when they first came out with the sewer assessment, I thought it was just to fix the sewers. And they said, okay, it's going to be over a five-year period. And so we, you know, so reluctantly, we said, okay, yeah, it's going to improve the sewer in the area. We'll go ahead and pay it, even though we only have two bathrooms in our business and it's only operated five days a week. It gets, we have far less sewage in our business than we have at our home in Encinitas. Encinitas, I'm paying $300 a year in sewer fees. Here, we're paying $3,300 in sewer fees. And your chart that you just showed up there is really misleading as far as what Encinitas residents pay compared to Vista. They pay far less than what you're, than what you're charging here. I thought, you know, I really feel that, that this assessment is just really uncalled for, that you keep on saying, oh, we're going to keep paying, charging you, you know, $3,000 a year in sewage fees. I mean, I'm assuming that you already got this fixed. To me, it's kind of like the Coronado Bridge where they keep on charging toll roads for years after it was paid for. So if the sewage system isn't already fixed in the time that you've had, you know, you need to start actually refunding businesses. It's really hurt me in the pocketbook because we're trying to rent out the building and we charge the, the prospective tenants, you know, on a trip... we charge the prospective tenants, you know, on a triple net fee. Well, they're saying, "Oh, why is yours so high?" $0.10 on the dollar goes to paying the sewage. If we didn't have the sewage, we would be much more competitive. So, you know, I'm really just, you know, disappointed because when we first moved here, Vista was a very business-friendly community. They really helped us in, in so many ways. And they, they improved the roads, you know, where we're at in, on La Marada in Sycamore, they did a great job improving it. You've done a great job, you know, building the city hall here and improving the city. But the sewage system, I think you've really let us down. So I would really like you guys to take a look at what you're doing. You're getting property tax money as it is from the state that goes to the city. You know, you should be spending that on the sewers as well as everything else you're spending it on. So I wish you would just, you know, reassess this and really do away with this, this sewage bill that is really out of hand.
I need you to wrap up.
I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you. I appreciate my colleagues' comments regarding the question about our customers in Buena. And just because they live in the county, they are still customers of our Buena Sanitation District that we administer. And more than that, they are our neighbors. And I understand and always have understood that the rebates come from our general fund, and I understand the intricacies with that for someone outside of our jurisdiction not paying into that aside from they pay what they pay for the district. But I think because they are our customers and they are in need, and whether it's a welfare payment or not, we do have seniors, we have disabled, we have people who are on limited incomes, who are not able to just run right out and work extra hours or get a second job, their, their income isn't keeping up with some of the expenses that we are facing as a city. And I think just because they're in the county doesn't mean that we can't reach out and find a way to help them, even if it's not something that we can do within our own, within our own jurisdiction, within the city. It's incumbent upon us to try to find a way to help them. So I appreciate that the city manager and staff will reach out to the county to see what avenues we can create for them. Because we can't just as a, as a city councilor, as a city, say, "Well, they live in the county. It's not up to us. Too bad for you." That's not the way we should be doing business here.
Okay, so that I see. Councilmember, Deputy Mayor.
I just want to agree with Councilwoman Rigby about reaching out to the county. I hope they have a similar program that we can make available to the county residents. I don't, I, I agree with you that we'd like to support those folks as well. One more quick question. So the gentleman who owns the business, he's got two toilets. So let's say I, I own a business in the business park and I, it's an office, there's no manufacturing or other use of water for any industrial purpose, and I've got five employees and they're using two toilets, or let's call it 10 employees, and they only, they're there eight hours a day. Is, is it really that much of a disparity? Would, how many, how many EDUs would I need if I had 10 employees and two toilets?
That'd be really hard to calculate, but we do get the water metered data annually from Vista Irrigation and use that, the data for that property for that calculation.
It's just difficult to, if he's really paying $3,300, then he'd have to have four or almost four and a half times as much use as a single-family dwelling in order, and if he's not doing any cooking on site, he's not going to have a lot of... So I don't, I don't know if the numbers are, are right, but anyway, I'll, I'll just ask for us to follow up with the gentleman and then let me know what the answer is. And, and again, maybe what we need to be doing is reaching out to some of the business owners. Maybe somebody's paying for more than capacity than they need because they haven't, and maybe, maybe business owners aren't aware that they can approach the city and, I mean, we want everybody to pay their fair, you know, amount, and nobody should have to pay more than their fair assessment because we are trying to spread the cost out based on who's generating the, the usage of the system, right? So.
And if Mr. Sims would like to talk to staff afterwards, we'd be happy to talk to him to find out about his particular details. And if somebody does have more capacity than they really need, maybe the capacity was bought at one time, the building was sold, it comes with that capacity. They do have the option to forego that capacity or a certain number of units to get to where they need to be in terms of capacity.
Maybe that's an option for that gentleman. With that said, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution proposed by staff.
Councilmember Rigby, are you still on there?
I'll second it.
Except for before?
No. I, I just wanted to make a comment to the, the lady in red who spoke a minute ago about the troubles that you're having and that you are a county resident. If you stay after the meeting, I'd be happy to talk to you and see what we can do and who we can find at the county to help you with that.
Okay, and so we have a motion and a second. And one other thing I wanted to make clear just before we go on is that, Mr. Sims, you know, you alluded that you, that what you're paying is going to pay for the, the system, and we have to keep relining pipes and re-making, and when the bio cells get over to Encina, they treat those bio cells. They used to truck a lot of it to Yuma. Right now, they heat dry it into little pebbles and sell it off, and then we have to, all these different tests of, of what the, the water that goes into the ocean, we have to keep testing that. There's a whole lot that goes into processing all of that. And so because of that, that's, that's what your, your costs are for. It's for treating all of that, all of that and all, all the sewer system. The, the, nice that you can flush your toilet and it's gone, and you don't have to think about it, but there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes to treat all of that. So.
I just want to make one quick comment. Just for the record, I'm, I'm not against helping our neighbors in the county, I'm just against using our tax dollars that are generated for our general fund, that are generated by people that live in the city, to subsidize anybody outside of our city, just for the record. Thank you.
Okay, please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to public hearing number two. Did you close the public hearing? Whoever did that. Okay. Public hearing number two. This is a public hearing to receive testimony regarding fees and policies for recreation and community services programs. This public hearing is now open. Our Parks and Community Services Director, Therand Dykman, will introduce the item.
My name is Therand Dykman. I'm the Director of Recreation and Community Services. I would like to, we're here tonight to discuss proposed changes for fees and policies for the Recreation Community Services Department for the calendar year of 2018. And with me tonight presenting is our Management Analyst, Emelda Huerta.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the City Council, my name is Emelda Huerta, and I am the Management Analyst in the Recreation and Community Services Department. This evening, I have before you the proposed Recreation and Community Services annual fees, policies, and procedures. Recreation and Community Services offers many programs. The mission is to provide programs and activities that serve the needs of our community. We operate many of Vista's recreation and cultural arts venues and facilitate the youth, adult, and senior recreation activities and services. Staff annually reviews the fees for Recreation and Community Services, department services, and programs. Based upon this review, staff proposes revising the existing fee schedules and policies and procedures for a number of services and programs. Cost staff took into consideration our state minimum wage increases, contracts, utilities, and various market conditions. Effective January 1st, 2018, the state minimum wage will increase by 50 cents. In addition, staff estimates an estimated impact of $80,000 in contracts, market, and industry variables, such as increases in actors' union requirements, housing for union actors, royalties, trucking, day camp supplies and snacks, sport supplies, and increases to our contracts, contracts related to setup services, janitorial cleaning, busking, transportation, and approximately $16,000 in utility cost increases department-wide. To offset increases to cost considerations, staff proposes minimum increases to maintain current service levels for the community and keep programs within subsidy levels set by city council. If approved, the proposed changes would become effective on January 1st, 2018. Council-approved annual level of support, council-approved annual level of support were established in 2012. Cultural arts has general fund support up to $200,000. Senior nutrition's general fund support is up to $275,000 per year. Wave is up to $400,000, and recreation has a cost recovery of 70%. Here is a quick preview of the 2018 season for cultural arts. Following is a five-year history of the cultural arts subsidy post the foundation contribution. Staff estimates an impact of approximately $98,710 of annual expenses to cultural arts caused by minimum wage. Additional compensation for actors' crew, increase in actors' union requirements, and other industry increases, such as housing for union actors, set props, costume rentals, and trucking, and royalties. The cultural arts division is not proposing any increases, increases to rental fees for 2018. However, changes to ticket prices are proposed as follows. Staff is proposing a consistent pricing structure for regular Wednesday, Thursday, Sunday shows and premium Friday, Saturday shows regardless of section. This is a $5 difference. Staff is also proposing to create a consistent discount structure on single tickets for seniors and youths, which is $2, and military, which is $4. Tickets in orchestra section are proposed to increase by $2 for Friday, Saturday shows for regular adult tickets. Senior student youth tickets are proposed to increase by a modest $2 in this section for Wednesday, Thursday, Sunday shows, and by $4 for Friday, Saturday shows. Military tickets are proposed to increase by $2 for Friday, Saturday shows in this section as well. In the reserved seat area, staff proposes a $2 increase to Friday, Saturday shows for regular tickets. Senior student youth tickets are proposed to increase by $2 for these days and $3 increase for military tickets. We also propose a $2 increase to military on Wednesday, Thursday, Sunday shows. In the fringe section, a $1 increase is proposed for regular tickets for regular shows. Senior student youth are proposed to increase by $1 and military by $4. For premium shows, regular tickets as well as senior student youth are proposed to increase by $2 and military by $3. In our reserved lawn section, staff proposes to increase regular and military tickets by $2, and senior student youth prices will change to $27 for regular tickets and $32 for premium tickets. No changes to the general lawn section are proposed. The same seat for Wednesday, Thursday, Sunday show will be $5 more for a Friday, Saturday show. In addition, the proposal indicates a consistent discount structure of $2 for senior student youth and $4 for military. In regards to subscription proposal highlighted are the revisions. All subscriptions are proposed to be 25% off base ticket price plus a facility fee of $2 per ticket, a total of $1 per subscription. Lower price points for family programs and local cabaret artists are also proposed for Moonlight Presents and Club M events to encourage new families and individuals to attend. In addition, the lower price point for Club M for new programs are to include a local talent with heavy hors d'oeuvres and desserts instead of a three-course meal. The estimated revenue impact should this pricing structure be approved is $94,110. The Moonlight will still remain the most affordable theater in the region. Next is the Wave Water Park. The Wave has operated under subsidy levels for five years. However, minimum wage will also significantly affect the Wave Water Park's budget as they employ many temporary and part-time staff. Season passes and family season passes are proposed to increase by $5. The military senior day ticket is also proposed to increase by $1. The current Ripley's Rainforest structure will also be replaced with a new splash pad with a recommended rental rate of $375 an hour. The resident general admission pricing is proposed to remain the same in an effort to provide a 10% discount of the general admission price to Vista residents. Staff is estimating an increase of $19,632 in the Wave's revenue next season to help offset, offset expense increases. Recreation proposes changes as follows. Staff recommends a 10% increase to sports, day camp, and early childhood education programs due to the new minimum wage increases, increase in program expenses. In the above slide, you can see the increases highlighted in yellow for basketball, tennis, volleyball, football, and softball for both residents and non-residents. This next slide shows proposed changes to the early childhood education programs and day camp, which translate to only $1 to $2 increase for early childhood education programs and $15 to $25 for day camp programs. Next are miscellaneous items along with the programs offered at the Ranch of Buena Vista Adobe, such as Adobe Days, summer camp, and scouts. Increase for these programs translate to $1 to $11. In addition to various programs, staff also proposes to increase facility rentals for all groups. On this screen, you will see the group definitions. Group A is defined as resident organizations, clubs for youth or seniors, resident nonprofit, City of Vista-recognized programs. Group B is non-resident nonprofit service recreational educational organizations. Group C is a resident private event, private event held by and for seniors 60 or over is eligible for 30% discount. Group D is a non-resident private event for profit organization or political campaign. Staff proposes facility rentals based on group categories with Group D being 100% of recreation costs. The Group D rate will cover 100% of direct, indirect, administration, and allocated expenses. Group C is 75% of Group D. Group B is 45% of Group D. And Group A is 35% of Group D and will cover 100% of direct and 10% to 20% of indirect costs. Staff is also proposing to eliminate the kitchen personnel hourly rate in the Morris B Vance Community Room, which is currently at $25 an hour. The shown proposed fees have increases from $8 to $19 and slight decreases to Group C for the Morris B Vance Community Room and Lobby. This slide shows the proposed fees for the meeting room at Fire Station 5 and the Jim Porter Recreation Center, which shows, shows slight decreases in Group C and an increase of $3 to $15 depending on group and facility. Increases at the Thibodeau Community Center translate into a $9 increase to Group A, $5 increase to Group B, and $1 increase to Group C. Staff also proposes to increase the rental costs for the Ranch of Buena Vista Adobe by 5% to cover the minimum wage and program and operating expense increases. Highlighted in this slide, you can see the impact to the current Friday, Saturday rate and Sunday through Thursday rate. And the estimated revenue increase to the Adobe is $2,000. And if I back up, the recreation estimated revenue impact was $26,500. Gloria McClellan, Adult Activity and Resource Center. Staff proposes an increase to facility rentals with similar increases as recreation to cover cost increases. The same changes in group rates will apply. In addition, private events held by a senior age 60 or over in Group C will continue to be eligible for a 30% discount as well as a 10% discount to daytime rentals Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The kitchen cleaning fee is... The kitchen cleaning fee is also proposed to increase from $61 to $65 based on our cleaning services contract. Staff is eliminating the game room rental use as this will be converted into a state-of-the-art computer classroom. The conference room will also not be rented as this is utilized for social services. The out-and-about program is proposed to be modified to $4 round-trip via shuttle, $6 for the van volunteer driver under 35 miles, and $12 for 35 and over miles as noted in the highlighted areas. This is a modest increase of $1 to $2. The total estimated revenue increase is $2,500 to senior services. A percentage discount is also proposed for long-term facility use for recreation facilities based on usage hours per month. Parties must enter into a long-term agreement to be eligible for this discount. Amendments to the policies and procedures are recommended to provide additional clarification and some revisions to existing policies. There are a few specific changes I would like to review with you tonight. The first is, under definitions, we are clarifying the youth teen event and eliminating the verbiage of "with 35 or more teenagers." In addition, we're clarifying the events with alcohol, as noted in number three. The next is under deposits. Staff added number three, deposits paid by check are due a minimum of 30 days prior to event date, and all checks are cashed. If credit card or cash-paid deposit, it is due 14 days prior to the rental date. Next is under cancellations and refunds. Staff changes to read Jim Porter Rec. Center Thibodeau Community Room, Park Terrace, and Azalea Room rentals. Facility rental applicant that provides a written cancellation more than 90 days prior to the rental date shall be entitled to refund of 100% versus the previous 50% of all building rental fees paid to date, and 100% of all other fees. Cancellations receive fewer than 90 days prior to rental event, should not be entitled to a refund of building facilities paid, however, shall receive 100% of other fees, which include cleaning, security, staff, alcohol permit paid to date if the city did not incur any expense because of rental. And we also have some revisions under site-specific policies and procedures. Staff added number five. For Civic Center Morris B Vance Community Room, lobby furniture must remain in place and cannot be temporarily relocated. We also added verbiage under Civic Center Lobby, furniture must remain in place and not be relocated. That concludes my presentation. Staff and I are available for questions.
Do I have any speakers? I have no speakers on this, and I don't... Ah, Councilman, Deputy Mayor Franklin.
As regards to the Wave, where are we at with capacity? Do we have excess capacity that's unsold? Could we accommodate more users at the Wave if they came?
That's hard to say. My initial response would be saying, no, we're pretty much at capacity and we staff accordingly on a given day. If you're just looking at the footprint of the property itself, there's really not a whole lot that you can do to expand on that, given what space we have left, unless you did a drastic remodel. That being said, you know, we have capacities for user loads in certain areas.
What kind of a model, did you say?
If there was...
Oh, unless we did a remodel.
Unless we did a remodel, a drastic remodel.
A drastic remodel.
Yeah, to change that particular function or that purpose of that area.
Okay, okay. So no other opportunities there to look for to increase revenue through marketing or anything like that?
We hit the marketing pretty heavily. We do have marketing planned. We've found that a lot of the social media, the Groupon methods tend to be the most responsive for us. We do track what's being redeemed from where. So there's always opportunities from a marketing standpoint. We do reach out for sponsorships and partnerships with area businesses as well. But a lot of times, it's just dependent on the weather.
Let me ask this question now. If we do the Groupon, generally we discount, right?
Groupon does provide a discount, yes.
Yeah. And if we're at capacity, then does it make sense to take a look at reducing the amount of promotional pricing that we do?
Well, I wouldn't say that we're at capacity on any given day. We're not going to be 100% occupied in the facility.
But you're saying that additional marketing to bring in additional bodies wouldn't be... I just... What I'd really like to know is that we've really put some business mind to work on the Wave. I don't know if we've ever brought in a business consultant to take a look at our pricing models to maximize revenue, or actually to maximize our net. But I'd really like to know that we consider doing that. I'd like to, every few years, I'd like to know that we're, you know, there are people that excel in business pricing strategy and marketing strategy. I'd like to know that we've employed some of those great minds in how we price the Wave and particularly how we market and how we offer discounts and how we maximize the usage of the facility.
I think the Wave staff has been tremendously creative over the years. We took over concessions a number of years ago and made it finally profitable in terms of marketing and capacity. And Mr. Dykman made the comment, we're fairly weather-dependent, especially in the month of July, and we are a small park. We have a limited number of rides, and so there's a price point at which... And we have our Wave Water Park manager, Angela Plasic, that's here, and if you have questions, she can answer those. And one of the things we've done is Ripley Rainforest has not been what we thought it was going to be, and so now we're putting the splash pad in, and we think that's going to be, you know, better for users and more people will take advantage of it, meaning hopefully more people come into the park. And if you're curious on Groupon or any other strategies that we've used with marketing or trying to get more people in there in capacity, Angela's here, she can answer those questions if you'd like.
You know, what I'm really saying is, I'd like us to explore bringing in some talented business people to give us some advice. In every good business, business owners reach out to other business owners, and they explore and investigate new ways. And I think, you know, a lot of business owners spend money for business coaching because not every person is born a good businessman. You know, it's something you have to educate yourself on, and there's a bit of a knack and a talent. And I simply suggest that I think it would make sense, there's some real price strategy stuff there that's complicated stuff. And I know our staff does a tremendous job, and it's not to diminish the job our staff does at all, it's simply to say that there are people who have great expertise in the area of pricing and marketing, and it might make a difference in how much we have to subsidize the Wave to employ some of that, some of that knowledge, and maybe it'd just be a total waste of money. The only way to ever find out would be to try it. Not suggesting we go spend $400,000 on marketing expert, but, I mean, we might find if we brought somebody in for, you know, for a few thousand bucks to give us some ideas, and it might be worthwhile. You know, and I've kind of been mentioning that all the time I've been on the council, and I haven't really pushed real vigorously for it. And, but I don't see it as an assault on the abilities of our staff at all. I just look at it as a thing that any intelligent business person does in his business. And I revile the idea of governments owning businesses at all, because government's not good business operator, never is. It's just a reality. We have perverse incentives that are other than profit, which is why I don't like to see government ever own a business. But if we're going to be business owners, and we are a business owner in this regard, I'd like to see us employ the best business science possible. And so, you know, I really hope my colleagues would join me in giving direction to staff on that, because I, you know, with any business, there's always a tweak that can be made to increase the net. And if we're not, if we just say, well, you know, the five of us at a meeting, and that's the best we can do, I mean, to me, that's not adequate. So I just, you know, I would hope that we would be open-minded to bringing in some really sharp people that might be able to help us with pricing strategy, so, and marketing. The other thing was, this might be a little silly, but I don't think it's that silly. We're having to raise a lot of prices because of the state's increase in minimum wage. And I think it might be worth considering where practicable that we put a written, particularly where we publish our rates in our city magazine and anywhere else where we have signage. And again, where it's practicable, and I wouldn't impose a mandate, but I'd kind of like to see some language that says, you know, part of our reason for our price increases is, you know, increase in minimum wage is affecting the cost of cities, parks, and recreation operating across the board. And I'd like to, I'd like for the citizens to connect the higher cost of services with the state's policy, with the legislature's policy that they've imposed upon us. So I would not mandate where we're going to do that, I would leave that to the staff. But I would wonder if the council would join with me in giving direction to the staff, that we'd like to see that kind of a notice thought through by the staff and included wherever practicable, wherever it's not going to cost us a bunch of extra money. I'd like to make that statement to the people and like them to understand the implication that our state policymakers have on the cost of providing services. That's, I think that's all I've got right now.
Councilor Aguilera.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. My question did have to do with minimum wage, so... Wave, how much of the increase is due to minimum wage?
Yes.
I've got it. 64%.
Yes.
Okay. So I think you make a good point. Moonlight was 25%, Rec. 41%, Senior Services 100%. I think it is probably important to get that information out there. I'm not exactly sure what the best way to do it would be, but I think that people need to know that, you know, decisions like that are affecting the prices that they pay. And I think people deserve to know that. So that's really all I wanted to say.
Councilor Evergreen.
Hello, hello. All right, so I just wanted to make sure, do we offer any type of grants for our early childhood education programs for our residents and non-residents? Or is it just $14 or $18 per day across the board regardless of your economic status?
No, we do have a scholarship program. If they do qualify for that, we would take a look at that.
Okay, cool. So it's, this price increase per se isn't affecting those who are struggling the most per se in our area?
Correct.
All right. The other question that I have is, in reading this Recreation and Community Services summary, by the way, you guys did a fantastic job putting it together. As a Vista resident, I was super stoked to just kind of go over every little aspect. I didn't realize how many different areas we had that we could rent and how affordable they are. So my question for you is, is there an easy spot on our website somewhere? You know, like a party rental spot or something like that, that we can just click and we can see, hey, you can rent out Fire Station Number 5 if you're this group, you can rent out just the Flow Rider at the Wave for this price? You know, I was shocked to find out for $350-something dollars, I mean, it's very affordable, you can rent out the Flow Rider for a few hours. I have four kids, I've paid a lot more than that for birthday parties in my day. And I didn't know that we even, you know, some of these areas, the different multipurpose rooms at the Rec. Center, I mean, there's a lot of venues that we have that are available. And I'm just wondering how easy is that to find, and what are we doing to tell our community about all these fantastic venues we have for, I mean, you're talking, you know, $54 for an hour for a multipurpose room at a Rec. Center? I mean, that's a big venue, you could have big parties there, like, I've got a daughter going to be 16, bro. You know, where can we find that stuff for our community? So is it easy, or are we really having to dig real deep to get this information?
We'll have to take a look at that. I know, for example, on the Waves website, there are specific tabs and has information relative to renting cabanas, renting the Flow Rider. So on that particular website, it might be a little bit easier to navigate.
Which is a...
Fewer clicks. When you get to the city website, the information's there, but it might not be quite as easy to find, so we can look into that and improving that. We also, for example, we rent out the Adobe a lot for weddings and special events. We use third-party websites, and we get a pretty good return on that investment as far as advertising for renting those facilities.
Maybe if we had like a landing page, when you click on, you know, like the Recreations tab, something pops up and says, hey, what are you searching for? Are you trying to sign your kid up for a sport? Are you looking for a venue for rent? I mean, you know, that's how they get you. You know, those landing pages pop up, what do you want? You know, so, so I don't know. I know that when I dig through the city website, sometimes it is a little tough to get information. And if we could make it easier for our citizens to see the resources we have available, I just think it'd be great. So just an idea. Thank you.
Councilor Rigby.
Thank you, and thank you for being here and for the report. You talked about the cost considerations, and it was brought up how much of the increase is due to minimum wage that's going to be going up in January. And I know that it's slated to go up again in increments between now and 2020. But on your cost consideration slide, you have the minimum wage increase separate, and then you have increases to costs, or I'm sorry, contracts, market, and industry. What costs are those outside of their impact of the minimum wage increase? If we could just revisit that?
Is what you're referring to, like, for instance, with the Moonlight, we have to truck in sets for every show, so we have to pay not only, you know, trucking fees, which means gas, which means higher prices on gas, electricity goes up. Is that what you're referring to in terms of increased fees?
Right. How much of those increased fees, you extrapolate the increase of the minimum wage, what are the other costs that are left? And the increase in utility charges, I wanted more information on that as well. What is the estimate? And I see the impact that you have here for utility charges. Are you talking what utilities specifically?
Electricity. It was specifically to electricity. The biggest increase we would see is to the Wave and next to the Moonlight. And that's department-wide. And I do have a breakdown per division.
Okay.
So for Cultural Arts, we did estimate the minimum wage increase at $26,352. Electricity cost increases about $5,000. Additional compensation for actors and crew, $13,960. Increase in actors' union requirements, $12,759. And other industry increases such as housing for union actors, sets, props, costume rentals, and trucking, royalties, $40,000. For the Wave Water Park, we did have an estimate for a minimum wage increase of $18,000, plus the electricity cost increase of approximately $10,000. The recreation expense increases, we had an estimated minimum wage at $10,000. Contractual increases of $5,000, which includes contracts for setup services, janitorial cleaning, busing, transportation, and security for events and rentals. And program expenses of about $9,500, which include day camp supplies, snacks, sports supplies, and allocated facility rental increase. And...
So I'm just going to ask another question. When we're talking about the increase in minimum wage, my understanding in talking with a lot of our business people in the community is that that not only impacts those wage earners who are at minimum wage, but it's the bump up for everybody across or up the ladder. I'm seeing heads shaking, that's what we're experiencing as well. So it's not just the minimum wage earner, it's everybody gets an increase because of that. And when we talk about the cost of gas, I know November 1st, we saw an increase of, they say 12 cents. Some places were 12 to 15 cents. I saw one of the gas stations in our own town up over a dollar a gallon. So they're doing what it is that they do as business people, taking advantage of a situation. But I also know that January 1st, we're slated to see another increase in costs as well. Have those been included in these estimates, or is that going to be something you're going to want to revisit with us next year?
No, we try to project those as best as we can. Things like fuel, in particular, for an example, when we're bringing in sets for one of our shows at the Moonlight over the summer, we don't... shows at the Moonlight over the summer, we don't necessarily know where we're going to source those. So we try to, we try to be conservative with our revenues, but a little bit more exaggerated with our expenses. So more of a worst-case scenario, let's say we have to ship it from halfway across the country as opposed to regionally here on the West Coast. So we do take those things into consideration to the best of our building.
Okay. This, again, like our previous item, is not an easy one to deal with, because I never ever want to raise rates on our Vistons. I don't want to raise rates on my family, my friends, my fellow Vistons. It's very difficult. Especially, you know, still, people are still struggling. We haven't all come out of this decades-long issue we've had. And, but I understand as a city, we cannot have, we have a rule of a seventy percent recovery for, for our programs. And I think that's, that's good, if maybe still a little bit low, but still good. So I understand with these costs that we are facing as a city, the increase of fuel, utilities, minimum wage, which affects everything. I understand that as a city, we have to pay those, and we have to keep pace, but it's very painful to do that. It really, it really is. But there's the one category that I really don't want to and I can't vote to, and that's the senior in the military. Because again, as I said a while ago, our seniors are on limited income, they're on fixed income, and they're not in a position where they can run out and work more hours overtime, get a second job. My mother is eighty years old, God bless her, and she's still working because she's got bills to pay. And I don't want to see a lot of our seniors having to do that. And with military, I know too many, too many of the military families who actually are on AFDC, they get food stamps, because we don't pay our military enough to actually live without subsidy from the government, which is very sad commentary and not one for us to take up here. But I'm, I'm not, and I know it's a dollar, and somebody told me, oh, Amanda, it's just a dollar. But a dollar here and a dollar here, there, it really makes a difference. So I can't in good conscience raise the rates on that demographic, the seniors and the military. And I agree with the Deputy Mayor on your, your discussion on business sense, and that it is difficult for a city, a government agency, to be running a business. And, and so that's probably something we could have more of a discussion on. But I thank you for your thorough report, and I thank you for what you do. I mean, the WAVE, I'm surprised we're not packed every single day. It's a great facility. I hear nothing but good things about the facility and the staff, and I know that we have award-winning staff at the WAVE, as well as with the Moonlight, with Mr. Gladini here, Producer of the Year, I think, a couple of years ago. So we do have some, some phenomenal amenities here in Vista, and they do need to be paid for. It's just sad that outside sources, outside impacts, outside stressors like the state of California are doing this to us. And, and I hope that whether they read it in fine print on something, or they feel it when they buy that ticket to the Moonlight or to the WAVE, that they make note of the fact that it's the state of California that's forcing this for the most part. So thank you for being here, thank you for what you're doing. This is not an easy decision.
I have no more speakers, so do anybody want to make, Deputy Mayor?
Does, does staff get enough guidance on that issue about the minimum wage? Did you need to hear from more of the council on that?
I think we have guidance.
Okay.
Do you want to make the motion?
Yeah, I would make the motion to approve the resolution proposed by staff.
Councilmember Rigby, did you want to speak again?
I should have finished my thought with asking my colleagues if they would forego the rate increases on the seniors and the military.
What would the cost impact be if we were to forego? Can you figure that out if we gave you a couple of minutes?
I'm not sure that we could tonight. I, I would, I would say they would be minimal. That, as Councilwoman Rigby mentioned, it is only a dollar or two, which I'm not trying to trivialize that, that number. Multiply that by that, that segment of the population, I, I would need some more numbers.
You know, I, I couldn't agree, Councilwoman, more with, I, I saw especially that the fringe seating jumped up, was it almost six dollars or something? Maybe it was four dollars, or no, I think it was five. Anyway, I, I don't want to raise rates on seniors for anything, or the military for anything. I wish we could afford to just give it all to them for free, I honestly do. But I am really convicted to the idea that by having consistent and small increases, that we avoid the thing that really galls people, which is the out-of-the-blue, unexpected increase that really catches people unaware. And so while I, I totally join you in your sentiment about not wanting to do it, I, for the, for the purpose of, of making it not so impactful when it's finally got to happen, I am, I am generally supportive of these slow and steady increases rather than the spikes. I think in the, in past years, we did a lot of spikes, and other cities we see do these big spikes, and they really make people unhappy, and I just like to avoid those, so. That's all I've got.
I would like to point out that at the, at the Moonlight in particular, a milita, a person in the military can purchase a ticket for as little as eight dollars. Granted, we're proposing to increase the, the orchestra and reserve seats, but there are other opportunities as well.
Councilor Aguilera.
Well, my comment was, I mean, nobody wants to raise rates if we don't have to. Obviously, we do if we want to run efficiently and at least try to get close to funding ourselves. My experience has been that people that sit in the orchestra and closer to the front, are, whether they're retired or not, or military or not, are fairly well-to-do, not, not, they're not rich or anything, but I mean, they, they can afford to do it, or they wouldn't be sitting there. You know, the eight-dollar seats, I think, are, you know, available to anybody, you know, out there. So I think we have to manage this responsibly and make small increases. And I know ex-military vets that have season tickets, they buy them year after year, and I know other retired individuals as well that have their season tickets. And I know they won't like to pay the extra, for sure, and it's great to show respect to those people. But I think we, we offer some discounts already, and I'm going to go ahead and second the motion.
Okay, see no other speakers, I'm out, call for the vote. That motion passes with one no vote by Councilmember Rigby. So we have one more public hearing. This is a public hearing to receive testimony regarding the vacation of portions of Vista Village Drive in West Vista Way. So our public hearing is now open, and our right-of-way agent, Kim Cruz, is going to provide the staff report.
I would ask the city councils, there's nobody here to speak on the issue, do you require a report?
Report? Looks like maybe not a report. So anybody have anything to say? I take a motion. Councilmember Rigby.
I would move that we close the public hearing and we approve staff's recommendation.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Please cast your votes. Thank you for waiting all around. There we go. That motion passes unanimously. Okay. That brings us to our first discussion item. There's two discussion items this evening. D1, fiscal year 2017-18 first quarter report. Finance Director Lauren Worm will provide the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The fiscal year 2017 to 18 first quarter report serves as a summary and comparison of general fund budget to actual results. The report includes proposed operating and capital budget adjustments for the first quarter. This report also includes recommended personnel changes as detailed in Exhibit 10 on pages 29 and 30. General fund revenues and expenditures are consistent with budgetary expectations for the first quarter. Significant amounts of cash receipts are not received evenly throughout the year, so we would not expect to be at twenty-five percent at this time. There are seventeen budget adjustments requested, as explained in detail in Exhibit 2 on pages eight to 10 of the agenda report. The adjustments do not have a significant overall impact on the general fund or on other funds. The largest single item is a 2.8 million reclassification between Phases Two and Three of the Paseo Santa Fe CIP project for the stormwater grant funds. These were accepted by the city council in June. This budget adjustment is only a reclassification with zero net impact on the overall CIP budget. The recommendation is to receive and file the fiscal year 2017 to 18 first quarter financial report, adopt the two resolutions amending the 2017 to 18 operating and capital budgets, and adopt the resolution amending the citywide classification and compensation index. Thank you, Mayor.
Any questions or anything from anyone? I don't, we don't have any, no speakers. So if, Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you for doing this. Good job. And I would move that we approve the recommendations and the resolutions as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. That brings us to our second discussion item, modification to city council policy 100-17, travel and training authorization and then expense reporting policy for council members. So I, I asked this item to be put on the agenda, just, I, I just thought that to allow for, you know, if you want to buy, sometimes our shirts get old and icky-looking, and so if you want to buy a shirt or something, I thought maybe out of our budget that we have twenty-five hundred dollars for, some of us use it for travel, for expenses, or to do conventions or whatever, but some of us don't use it all. But if we, you know, sometimes when we are at city events, it's nice to have a City of Vista shirt, so. Anyway, so that, I asked for that. So I recommend added language to the policy for that purpose, if that's okay. Councilmember Rigby, is that from last time or this time?
This, this time.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing this forward, I appreciate it, as somebody who does like to wear my city's sweaters. So I, I appreciate this, and I'm in favor of this, and, and I think what you're, what you're going for here is, the twenty-five hundred dollars was originally described as our travel fund to get us to conferences, et cetera, but we're expanding it to allow council to use it for city business, however that is defined at the moment.
Okay.
Am I correct?
You're doing, you're good.
Okay. So if you make the motion, I'll second your motion.
Okay, so, all right, I'll make the motion. So I was looking to see how the wording goes. Just says to allow for purchase of city logo apparel. Did you want, is that okay there? Oh, Councilmember Green, sorry.
No problem. My question is, and my understanding was that we were going to allocate that twenty-five hundred dollars to be used not only for city apparel per se, but also any other, you know, city business that we would need reimbursed for. I mean, I can't think of anything right now, but so that we don't have to bring this up every time, you know, we need to get reimbursed for a drive to Pasadena, you know, I mean, I, I'm just wondering if we need to broaden that as opposed to just say that it's for city apparel? That's my question, is, are we going to make it a...
So the, the policy, yes, the policy as currently proposed, in addition to travel and training, in addition to meetings that you can go to at your discretion or functions, the mayor is proposing to add city logo apparel to this. It is not, as currently proposed, is not broad enough just to include anything for the twenty-five hundred dollars.
Can't just spend it on anything.
Well, of course not on anything. I'm talking city business, though, but I guess that's covered under the travel. Yeah, thanks, Patrick.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest, in the interest of not revisiting this issue again for a long time, that we move to make the budget available for any official governmental purpose as defined by city policy and arbitrated by the city manager. So instead of adding the words apparel in there, just making it for any official governmental purpose as defined by policy, and again, with the city manager having the final say on anything.
I don't know, do you want, I don't know if he wants oversight over every little thing like that.
If, if the council wants to deem it for official government purpose, that is certainly, you know, I would leave it to each council member to spend it as she sees fit.
We have a use-of-funds policy that governs expenditures for official governmental purposes, right?
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
We have a policy governing the expenditure of funds and restricting it to official governmental purposes, I would imagine.
Yeah, we have different codes and policies that call for that.
I would, I would know if city logo apparel would be part of that policy.
Well, don't we, don't we provide some city logo apparel to some of our other employees?
We do for inspectors and people that work the front counter.
That's a decision that you make as city manager.
Council at different times when you're elected.
Who's going to have apparel and who won't, right?
What's that?
That's a decision that you make in terms of who's going to have apparel and who won't.
City council is so interested in, in making this money available for governmental purpose, I would say that apparel would qualify under that for items that you use in the course of business.
I, I think it's a fair thing. I mean, we've had a couple of different issues that have come up, and rather than continue to tack on each individual item, I, I'd just like to say, anything that's an official governmental purpose, that's my idea. That'd be, that'd be my motion if there's a second for it.
I'm okay with that. Are you okay with that?
I would be okay with that as well.
Okay, the maker of the motion, how about, Councilmember Aguilera, are you okay with that? Not really. Well, say something. What are you okay with?
You know, I think the, we should allow the purchase of city logo apparel. I, I don't know, I have two shirts myself that the city purchased for me when I first got elected, or a couple of years after I got elected, I guess. And I, I continue to use those when I, when I can.
Are they looking okay still? You've been on the council a long time.
Well, they're maybe a little stretched out at this point, but that's, that's my problem. You know, I, I think we should be allowed, you know, a couple of shirts, a term or whatever, I don't know, but, you know, you know, I wasn't in favor of the travel expense either. I know that, you know, our council members do use it and represent the city well, and I think there's some good use that's come from it, so I do see the benefits of that. And I've used it myself as well, as a full disclosure, go on the Sandag meetings and that type of thing. I just, I, I just want to caution everybody here that, you know, if we just kind of open it up to, you know, what defines, you know, city, city business, number one, putting a logo on a nice hat, you know, which I think is very nice, and Joe's done that with his own money. But I mean, you know, there's a lot of things you could put a logo on and, and, and suddenly it becomes official, I guess. So I'm just worried about making it too broad. I do, you know, I don't like the fact that we have to come back here and discuss this, but I think it's important for us to discuss, to discuss this in public so that people know how we are spending their money. So that's all.
You sold me. I'm serious.
Okay.
I agree.
So, so what is, so then, why are you...
So we can keep the motion as is.
We're still with your original motion, just to do as it says here.
With the original motion?
That's fine.
Is it okay?
And I'm still good with my second? Okay.
Thank you. I'll, I'll support that then. Reluctantly, I will support it.
Okay. Then everyone, please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, so that is the end of our, oh, do I have oral communications? So each speaker is given three minutes to speak on matters not on our agenda, and we have two speakers. Greg Barnicle? Thank you for waiting for a long time for us. Talk right into it, so we can hear you real well.
I'm Greg Barnicle. My wife and I own Barnacles Express here on East Vista Way, and we're here regarding the median project the city's going to do next year. We're a mid-block station. We're at a disadvantage to our competition. They're on the street corners, they have the stoplight, and with a solid median from Townsite to Bringle Terrace, I've gone down at the peak periods, morning, noon, and night. I've counted cars. Thirty percent of the business turns left into the station. You take that away from us, that's going to be a big impact on our income. The city said they're going to give us U-turns at Bringle Terrace and Townsite, but it takes longer to do a U-turn than a left turn. I've timed it, starting in front of the station, down to Townsite, made the U-turn, back to Bringle Terrace, made the U-turn, back to the station. It averages five and a half minutes during the peak periods. You know, they said the median's going in because of the accidents. I believe you all have a picture of the accidents there. I don't know what time period that is, but in front of the station, I believe there's a total of five accidents out of 173. That's not even 3%, and they're just minor fender benders. Nothing major there. We've been there since 1988. We started with just renting the property, we got a lease, we bought it, bought the lot next door, remodeled, and it's, that's my family and mine, it's our retirement, it's our income. And to take away 25% of the business, call it, we've generated the last three years 1.1 million in state excise tax, that you get a percentage of that. Sales tax last year was 155,000. This year, we're going to exceed 175,000. You take 25% of the sales tax, that's $40,000 gone. The state excise tax, $250,000 gone. That's quite a bit of chunk when you need the revenue, you know, everybody needs that revenue. I think we're all creatures of habits. I bet all of us go to the same place, get our hair done, same grocery store, and I get customers going to another facility, they're going to stay there for the convenience. They're not going to come back to me. And it's a, I think, you know, if I asked any one of you to step down here and be in my position, how would you feel? When you've been there almost 30 years, and built a good business, and now you're possibly going to see it cut by 25%? And I think, I'd like a lane going both ways going out of there. You know, we can continue on down Vista Way, pull in from Vista Way, but I know that's going to be impossible, but I think just a left turn in is feasible. And I've spoken, you know, three of the council members have called me back, and I appreciate it, but what I've been hearing, it's going to possibly jeopardize the grant. But I've asked, where does it say that? You put in a left turn pocket, you're not getting your grant. You know, where does it say that? But, you know, our business is high traffic, we need those cars, and that's what I'm, I'm here, you know, what's my next step? You know, do I go to the city manager, city council, get outside council? I don't know what to do, and so I'm asking for your help on what's next. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. We have one other speaker, Timothy Bigum.
Timothy Bigum, 92081. Mayor Ritter, council. Councilor, Mr. Johnson. May I read to the cannabis issue, please? During the last 10 months of discourse, from a Vista homeowner and businessperson's perspective, these are the legal, common sense, and compassionate conclusions that we have settled on. As Councilman Green says, and this is paraphrasing, he just wants the will of the people to be recognized in a safe and legal manner. I believe everyone agrees with that. The dominant theme from this podium during discussions is the overall safety and security of the illegal pot shops that exist in our city. It ranges from the illegal land use to unfettered traffic to the clientele that they attract. There was one person who said they felt unsafe and undignified to be forced to frequent these places. Even the people that make their presentations about the sheriff's closures are speaking to the safety and security of their establishments. When is it that the compassionate people of California, Vista, California, would turn their backs on 43% of their fellow citizens? Forty-three percent of the voting Vistons did not want adult recreational cannabis in any form. There should be no compromise with the will of the voting people, but shouldn't there be compassion and understanding from the people that are introducing cannabis to the city that we all live in? The evolution of your comments and thoughts have brought us to this belief. The cannabis retail exposure for Vista should be in a non-storefront, delivery-only concept. Today's delivery technologies allows for needed data control and reporting, as well as superior customer service. All of your cannabis products delivered to the privacy, safety, and security of your own home. What angst does that concept relieve? Let me count the ways. Politically speaking, we believe that there is a larger voting bloc in this city that would vote no to any public initiative that turns Vista into the pot shop row of North County, and vote yes for the legal, private, unintrusive, safe delivery of cannabis products to their homes. The voting constituent needs to be truthfully informed. The non-voting constituent needs to be a voice heard by the voter, that we do not want 10 storefront pot shops in our small 18 square miles, that we do not want...
I need you to wrap up, Timothy.
Yes, ma'am. That we do not want big shots from Sacramento telling Vistons what's best for us. Please look for my follow-up emails that I do send you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes all of our speakers. So I will do my mayor's comments here, and then I'll go down the road for, down the aisle there for all of yours. New wayfinding signs are being installed downtown this week, which is exciting, to assist visitors looking for public parking and attractions in the downtown area. In addition, all the new energy-efficient street lamps have been installed and are creating a more safe and well-lit downtown during the evening hours. So it looks great down there. I think it sounds lit, and I know that, I think that they're going to put Christmas lights, did I read that somewhere, that North Coast Church is going to put up Christmas lights and banners or something this weekend? So look for that coming. Starting the first week in December, a roundabout is being installed on Vale Terrace Drive at Ponderosa. This will reduce speeding vehicles and improve the safety for pedestrians walking on the nature trail that extends across Vale Terrace there, and the construction will take four to six weeks. So know that if you live on Vale Terrace, you're going to be kind of under construction for a bit. The city's housing division is seeking community input on prioritizing CDBG grant funds that assist low-income Vista residents. A workshop is being held from 6:00 to 8:00 on Thursday, November 16th, which is actually this Thursday, at North County Lifeline. If you cannot attend, we will encourage you to take a short survey to provide your input online at cityofvista.com. And one last thing, as the Christmas holiday approaches, starting next week, the city will be collecting new toys and gift cards for our adopted marine unit, which is HMLA 369. Drop off new items to the Civic Center from November 27th through December 4th. And those are my announcements, and I will start, I'll start with Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The only announcement I have is inviting everyone to join me at November Fest at the Alta Vista Gardens. November Fest is a take on Oktoberfest, you might figure out, but many of our breweries are going to be there, and other breweries from other towns as well, so if you need tickets, I've got tickets. A couple of my council members helped me out by buying some tickets, so they'll be there, too. But anyways, it's a fun time. It's a 21 and up event, but it's a good time. A lot of people there last year, music, good beer, good food. And that's all I've got, other than that.
Date and time of it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Saturday, November 18th, 12:00 to 4:00 p.m.
That this Saturday?
This Saturday.
Okay.
So happy Thanksgiving, and have a blessed Thanksgiving.
Yes. Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say you had talked about the toy drive for HMLA 369. Our gunfighters deployed this morning, so they are going to be gone for an undisclosed amount of time to an undisclosed location. So I think it's great that we do, as a city, that we've adopted that unit, and while the gunfighters are deployed, that we will step in and help out where we can with the families that are still here. So if you can donate to that cause, that would be awesome. Also, I wanted to say Thursday, also this Thursday, November 16th, we're going to be having our second workshop to discuss the Bub Williamson Park designs with the community. It's a community workshop, it's going to be 6:00 p.m. this Thursday at Olive Elementary School. So if you want to come and talk about the park, please come and visit. Have your voice.
Not to interrupt, but Grapevine.
What did I say?
Olive.
I'm so sorry. It's at Grapevine Elementary School. That's the one that was in my head. I'm so sorry. Grapevine Elementary School, right there off on Grapevine Drive. Yes, thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor?
I just want to invite everybody before they go to Summer Fest to come have pancake with Congressman Isa on Saturday morning, the 18th, and that's also a drive for toys for marine E4 envelope families aboard Camp Pendleton. So if you can come, bring a new unwrapped toy, bring the family, kids, the more the merrier. It's at the Veterans Association of North County from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. on the 18th.
That would be Saturday, too?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Green?
All right, yes, I will be attending the November Fest in the gardens with the Amigos de Vista. They have craft breweries, mead and wineries, and also dancing and raffle tickets. Sounds like an amazing party. Yeah, I bought my ticket. Another thing I want to do, just thank you guys all for staying here and listening and being a part of your city, being heard. Know that we do listen, we do appreciate you showing up. One special shout-out I'd like to give is to our assistant city manager, Ally Zimmerman. Maybe, Ally Zimmerman, maybe you guys didn't see, but we had a citizen who was concerned and, you know, needed attention, and she actually handled it and allowed us to move on with the meeting. So thank you so much, Ally, for your work on the backend, really appreciate it. Have a great Thanksgiving, everyone.
Okay, city manager?
Just want to let everybody know, our city offices in the Vista Library will be closed over the Thanksgiving holiday, which is Thursday and Friday, November 23rd and 24th. If you have trash pickup, that occurs on Thursday or Friday, it will be delayed one day that week. In addition, the Moonlight Amphitheater is having a Frozen Sing-Along on Saturday, December 2nd, so if you're interested in that, it's at 6:30 p.m., and you can go to moonlightstage.com for more information on tickets. And the last item is I just wanted to wish Councilwoman Rigby a happy birthday tomorrow.
Oh, yes, happy birthday. How about our city attorney?
I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and a happy birthday to one on the dais.
How about our city clerk? Nothing today? Nothing? Okay. And I would just, before I quit, I just wanted to thank our paramedics. I had emergency, had to have emergency surgery. But I always thought I had to be bleeding in the street in order to call them, but I was having so much pain, and so I called them, and they were so good, and they took me to the hospital, and I've never ridden in an ambulance before, and it was not a very comfortable ride. It's kind of a rough, rough, big machine there, but it was, but it was very nice, and they were so good. I just appreciate them so much for that. So I had emergency gallbladder removal, so that was not a fun thing, but that was a week and a half ago, so I'm very grateful to them and grateful to be back here. So with that, if anything else for the order, I will say we are adjourned at 7:54.